Um, I'm on my call to need order. I'll try to get this back. I'm going to call to call me the order. It was March first, twenty twenty-two. I promise I will get this. This is the West of the City Council meeting. Present are Omar Machias, Karen Mataran, and Danes Williams. Yes. And we have two council members who are not present here today, Diane Baronic and Jose Zacharias. So, um, all in favor of calling me the order? I'll get this one. So, um, we're going to move to the approval of the agenda. Motion to approve agenda. All in favor? Any discussion? Any votes? Okay. Oh, no, all in favor of the presentation? Any votes? The agenda is three zero. We'll move to item number three on the agenda, public hearing, fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget amendments. We will open the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget amendments. Do we have to? Motion to open? All right. How's your machine is? Yes. Budget amendments? Yes. We will open the public hearing, three zero. So, is there anyone here in the public that wish to make a comment or with the budget amendment presented? Well, people with their hand for public comments for the budget amendment? Yes.
Any comments on the budget amendment?
Doesn't look like we have any. There were no.
No written comments? Okay. So, if there's no comments, then we will close the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget amendment. Counselor, motion to close? Sorry, thank you. You guys got it quicker than me. Counselor. Yes. Yes. So, we will close the both the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget amendment. I will move on to item three, three, resolution two zero, two, two, zero, three, zero, one, that's zero, nine. Motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget amendment. Second. Counselor, any discussion?
Counselor.
Yes.
Yes.
The resolution passes three zero. Thank you. And we will move on to the police officer to item four on the agenda, the police officer of office with Jack Beerman. If you'd like to come up here. Walk around. So, please raise your hand. And repeat after me. I, Jess Beerman, do solemnly swear.
I, Jack Beerman, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
For the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution, State of Iowa.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and partially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties as police officer.
Discharge all duties as police officer.
For the city of West Liberty, Iowa.
For the city of West Liberty.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Thank you.
Welcome again.
And we'll have you sign this.
Just stand right there.
You got it. How many people does it take to put bad on the police officer?
Many police officers.
There's a joke there.
All right, turn this way. Thank you.
You know, Jack's sign. And then have your sign. Welcome back, Jeff.
Thank you. So, we'll move on to item five. Before we go into the approval of the agenda, I'd like to make an amendment to the minutes. If council members will look at the second page of the city minutes. Excuse me. Third paragraph. I would like to make an amendment to the statement, council member Jose Zacharias asked the city manager to present a letter to mayor with regards to her behavior and bias against Zacharias by removal from the council committees. I would like to add the word perceived to bias before that, as that was, as an opinion that was stated and not fact. Do I have a motion to amend the minutes?
A motion to amend stated.
And then, if there's any discussion, I'm open to the discussion, of course. All in favor of amending the minutes? Any opposed? Yeah, the meeting minutes will be amended and I will not sign these ones until.
So, we'll amend that to update with the amendment. Motion and approve. And then we'll republish them and have them ready for the next.
Thank you. So, with that amended, we can move to the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. All in favor, or any discussion as always, sorry, guys.
Try to get out of here.
You know. Chose to watch. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved, three zero. So, the regular council meeting minutes for February fifteenth of the amended will be. And then the liquor license renewal request for Musketeers county air grounds will also be approved. We'll move on to item six on the agenda, the vendor voucher claims.
Motion to approve vendor vouchers claims list.
All, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the vendor voucher claims. In the amount of two hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred seventy-one dollars and ninety-two cents is approved, three zero. We'll move to item seven, public comments and correspondence. This is the time set aside for comments from public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Please say your name and address for the record. And try to keep your comments brief, but we'd like to hear from everybody who wants to speak here tonight.
Please.
Buenas noches. My name is Maria Diaz.
Welcome in. My name is Maria Diaz.
And you'll probably know our group. Normally, we're here in front of all of you.
Are you all familiar with our group and we're here again in front of you all?
We're grateful for the opportunity.
We give thanks for the opportunity.
And normally, we're in a fight for the money that has been given to the government to help workers excluded and essential.
And again, we're here in the fight for this money, the government, to get to exclude essential workers.
And this occasion, we don't want clarity, we want justice. I think the families that are here, we've gathered here every day, month after month. I think we're here for a purpose and because they deserve it.
I feel that the families and people are here today, we've been meeting day after day, month after month, and we're ready for the answer.
And you guys, you had to have had a response. They canceled that meeting for problems of yours and it's empty.
We know that we were going to get a response. We know that this meeting had to be canceled because of personal problems and we understand that.
And we're in the same fight. We're going to be constant and always united. A small group, simply because we're working, we're doing our jobs, and we can't stop. But we're the little group, we're here, we're for the good.
We're going to continue constantly in the fight. We are a smaller group tonight because some people had to work when we're here today again.
And, uh, we, I mean, if you don't trust me, the bottom, I trust you. We're in agreement that if you give us the money, it can help us as leaders. It can help us fight the battle, make it easier for us to work. We already have the people here. And we have the list of the two hundred people we have in our community that are waiting for help.
So, we hope that you, um, can find or trust us, which I'm able to. We are here to help. We want to help give out this money. We can help connect you with all the people that need this money. This is the people that are signing petitions. We can help you with the application and the paperwork. And to connect the people to these funds.
It's more reliable for you.
Is that better for you?
How many are there?
How many are there?
Between one hundred fifty and one hundred ninety excluded workers. We're paying half of what is being given to help the community. We're not, we're not, we're in the middle of the money, we're paying half of it.
But I think what we feel is just half the money. Muchas gracias.
I'm here again, again, again. Good evening, thank you everyone. Thank you for the time that you gave us to express ourselves. Normally, I just want to remember or ask if it's discussed, the topic that we've proposed.
Just want to remind you or ask you to discuss this issue that we brought before you.
Everything is calm, not moving. I don't know what's going on, so I'm here to ask what is going on. We've proposed, uh, testimonies of various families, we've proposed, I think it's to make more testimonies, because you guys have listened to us.
We've come and planted lots of different stories, testimonies of people when it's happened. We feel that we don't need to bring any more of those forward and just wanting to know what's going on.
What we need is to know, what we're here for. To know the answer. It's necessary, the help for various families here, really. They've suffered a lot. So, we're willing to be here. One thousand four hundred dollars is nothing. For what you pay here, really. Only that, I need, we're willing to, if we can afford that money, we want it to be. It's a test of identification. Something simple, not too much. A test of residency. A certificate of nationality. I think those requirements are simple. Simple to make things easier. And trust, we can work with you if you're comfortable or confident in the group of Scooch Amigos. That's all.
And I thought there's someone else who wants to speak as well.
My name is Paul Martin. I've been in West Liberty since two thousand and three. About nineteen years. And I was pastor here for ten years at St. Joseph's. And I've helped in one way or another since I retired at St. Joseph's. Still live here on Maxine Avenue. And I come here really to kind of encourage you to say that I've been encouraged by what I've seen from the council. I think I went to the majority of the Scooch Amigos meetings. And I know I've seen four of you, at least, maybe more, that have been at the meetings, that invited to come to the meetings. And over at St. Joseph's. And so, that was encouraging, you know, and it seemed like, and I wanted to give a special shout out to Lee over here. We had a meeting around the Statue of Liberty, February fourteenth. Delivered a letter to the city council. Lee came out to receive that letter. Went around, I don't know how many we had there, thirty, thirty-five, shook hands with everybody she did. But that impressed me. And so, I've been impressed, you know, we're kind of moving the ball, but it seemed like we hit the red zone. You know? To take a football term. That, you know, some teams have a hard time moving the ball in the red zone. And I hope that's not us, you know? And so, I just want to encourage them to keep going, because I really think you had good intentions. And when I heard you talk at the meetings that we've had and fourteen hundred dollars, if that's the figure that we settled on. That's less than half of what I get. As stimulus. I think I got thirty-two hundred. One of the, you know, and everybody that's asking needed it for nights. Now, I might probably hit my two minutes, so just try to move across that goal line, that's what I guess that I come to ask you to do. And thanks for the support so far. And like I say, I've been kind of impressed, impressed with the people, the organization, you know, that they have formed. Thank you.
Yeah, as we, when we talked that day, I did provide that to council in the next package, the information that was provided. Again, we appreciate the respect that you showed our city staff and chief as well. Had mentioned how everybody handled the whole event.
She said she gave them the package, also thank you to all of you. This day, we had a lot of peace, also the police, when they asked us to move, we did. And we were also happy, respected, and proud of our citizens. It's just one thing, we are families of peace. We don't want to continue to be forgotten. We want to help the people who need it. That's all I ask.
But please, you can give the help to the families of maybe.
Thanks.
I would like to know, like, maybe city manager, hopefully, you can shed some light on the process and what next steps would be so that we can actually vote.
We are still doing our due diligence, weighing personal legal opinions and gathering other information. But I think it's important to bring to the finance committee, and once we have all of that information, we'll schedule a finance committee, which consists of yourself, I count from the minutes and council or fair, we'll share that information, we'll talk about it, and you also bring a recommendation.
Who's the next step? The person from the city said that the next step, he's also investigating, he says everything, but take the subject in front of the committee, financial, and then it's done. And then, you know, depending on what you do, there are a lot of options for those dollars.
Depending on what you do, you may have to put in some sort of a protocol as to how you're going to dispose those funds.
I know, but.
That will take a little bit of time.
That's also being worked on, I know. Is there a timeline that we can establish, at least tonight, or are you still waiting on emails?
I'm still waiting on some phone calls and some emails, and I don't have a firm commitment yet when I'm going to get some of the stuff. I do know the legal opinion, and this has been worked on, because I've seen some correspondence going back and forth. And they know that it's important to get that answer as soon as we can. As soon as we have it, like I said, I'll notify the finance committee, and we're going to be set up.
It's just a really busy time right now.
Yeah, we're running over budgets.
Yeah, we have to. Normally, this type of year is budget season. So, we're required by state to make sure that we meet it in time and fashion. So, that's right now the priority, because we have to turn that in.
He said, "It's a lot of work this time of year, because they're working on their purpose of the city."
I think there's a saying, it's a government case. It can become frustrating, because we are, you know, again, at the, you know, between attorneys and they have to reach out and make sure from, you know, legal advice. And again, you know, if we're going to do something, you want to do it right. You don't want to have a situation that we have to, you know, that we miss a step that we.
Is it possible to take a vote before, though, you have to kind of figure out all the emails? Like, is it possible to vote before you figure out all the emails?
We really have to have, the committee's going to need to make a recommendation, and council will have to have. They'll, I'm sure that they'll have a discussion as to how they want to utilize those funds, and then they'll make their move.
I'm asking if you can vote and then decide, but they say that you have to go first with the committee financial and then you can vote.
And I know, I've seen the emails, and the correspondence going back and forth. And I know the city manager has communicated, you know, that mayor and council, you know, have asked for. But again, you know, when they're reaching out to other, they have to reach out, because if they don't have the answer, they got to reach out to somebody at the next level. And then again, I mean, our urgency doesn't always equal their urgency. So, but we'll continue, and the city manager will continue to get that together, so.
I just want to say something too, that's been on my mind since the last council meeting. For the community that might be, because we're getting more traction, our YouTube videos and things like that for community members that might be watching. Because there is some, some folks in the community that don't quite understand. Well, maybe they think they understand, but they don't understand how important you are to our community. And they don't understand and realize how much dollars you also put into our community. And they don't understand a lot of the barriers that have been put in place for immigrants immigrants throughout decades and decades in this country, and that you all were failed. And that you do pay taxes, but you don't have representation. And so, this country being founded on that, you know, people fleeing immigrants from other countries coming to this new land to make a new life for them, because they were persecuted and taxed by tyranny. And I feel like it's repeating over and over again to our most essential workers that don't deserve it. So, I just want you all to know that you are on my mind every single day. And I'm trying, and I know that others in council are really trying to speed up this process and see what we can do for you all. And I just want you to know that you are very much appreciated, and I understand how hard this might be for you all. But know that I do have your back, and I understand. I don't know how you're going to translate that.
I'll try a little bit. She says that most people in this community don't understand. That the adults give so much support, they don't get it. But she wants to say that we're proud of them and they're proud of us. It's okay, but. I only have a question for them. How much more time do you want to give, more or less a month, a week, two months? How much more do we have to wait?
We have to wait until you take a decision, a week, a month?
You know, what I've been doing myself is setting personal deadlines, if I don't hear back by this, to check in with the city manager. And, you know, that's me personally, because I don't want this to prolong. You all have waited too long as it is.
She always asks people every now and then.
But we also, as a counselor, in this fight to fight back at these systems that have failed immigrants in this country. And so, it does slow down things. So, we're in our own battles to try to fight those systems, to get those responses that we need and the approvals that we need to go ahead and vote on this.
Just going back to our question. I know we can, you mentioned, like, we've been a month.
Yeah, no, and that was me not fully understanding the process too. It is always on my mind, and it is something that I support as well, and something I'd like to see move forward. So, I think we will keep on it. And one of the most important things too is if and when, you know, when council votes, that we have. that we have systems in place for distribution that are safe for, for everybody that are fair. And that helps as many people as we possibly can with this. And, and a lot of that, you know, yeah, sorry, I'll let you.
Ella dijo que cuando toma la votación tiene que tener el sistema aseguró, dice seguro el proceso para el dinero. Pero yo, yo no entiendo eso, por qué no puede tomar la votación.
Yo creo que yo hablo en español todo, pero como les digo, es un proceso. Pues de la noche a la mañana, pues nosotros estamos a nuestro paso, pero también tenemos que respetar el paso del gobierno. Porque, porque todos hemos dado una decisión, nos damos una decisión y algo pasa en el proceso, les quedamos mal. La cosa que nos queda mal, la cosa es ayudarlos y poderles dar el dinero. Todos estamos en, todos los meses los que tenemos.
Yo entiendo que es eso. Piensan que desde las mujeres que les dijimos ustedes diera porque hubieran hecho una reunión, diera porque se hubieran puesto de.
Y ahora está el tiempo de que estamos también con las finanzas del pueblo. Tenemos también que reportar todo al, al estado y también al federal. O sea, no nos, no nos, no nos estamos olvidando de nadie. Nos queremos ayudar, queremos hacer un proceso que sea, que proteja a la gente que no tenga papel.
También porque.
Pues sí, porque nosotros cuando la pandemia estaba en su mero tope, nosotros teníamos que salir a trabajar. Y usted si tiene su seguro, no salían porque el gobierno se estaba dando dinero. Ya nosotros no, nosotros salíamos a trabajar, no, yo sé, yo tengo familia que es, yo trabajo, yo conozco, yo esperaba trabajar. Pero como digo, todos estamos de acuerdo, queremos ayudar, porque se nos están olvidando. Yo sé que no hemos dado una respuesta, ni tampoco hemos pedido votar porque tenemos que tener todo en orden. Para que ya quedemos la votación, esté seguro y esté plantado y ya listo para distribuir.
Think, can we have sort of for our note takers and kind of the gist? And I caught maybe seventy percent of that. So can we have the gist of the conversation that was just going on so far?
What I said is that, obviously, this is the process, you know, we have our speed and the government has their speed. Obviously, you know, these people are not forgotten. I have family members too that also, when I worked during the pandemic and then I received financial help. Obviously, like they said, like, once we get everything going, we want to make sure everything's in place, make sure everything is ready to go. When we make a vote and we all vote yes, or we make this same vote, it's ready to be distributed with no, with no flaw. There we go.
Porque pues hasta, hasta los miles les han pagado a los que tienen seguro, hasta miles con todo eso les han ayudado. Y nosotros no, nosotros no hemos ayudado, nosotros tenemos que salir a trabajar para pagar nosotros el bill. Y el de aquí de la ciudad no, no es muy valioso el bill de aquí de la ciudad.
What well I was saying before is that, you know, during the pandemic, we didn't get those chats, people that's coming in, asking like, stay home. And we had to go out. And even now, you know, people with social security numbers are able to apply for help and we can't.
I know that, you know, the day, February fourteenth, when you were at city hall, again, I want to remind you, mayor, the council, the city staff, we see you. You are West Liberty community, as all of us are. So we do see you. And, and again, just to say, I mean, if there was a way that council had motioned, and let's say, and we could fast forward it and we could do it, do it in that manner, I have no doubt that, you know, they would try and move those steps as fast as they can. But there, just as council member Martinez said, I mean, with anything, there is a process. And we have to be certain that we have council educated, we have to be certain that we have all of the legal pieces in place. We have to make sure that if the council as a whole decides they want to provide, you know, what is the funds, what are the requirements? So there, there are some steps, it's not going to, I'm sorry, it's not going to happen overnight. But all I can remind you again is, we all see you and we recognize you as a part of this community.
Ella está diciendo que ellos están mirando a nosotros y sienten que ustedes son parte de la comunidad. Pero hay un proceso que tiene que llevar, tiene que cerrar todo, las leyes y también informar la gente aquí que están en la mesa sobre las leyes. Pero quieren recordar a ustedes que ustedes son parte de la comunidad y si está.
And if I might make a recommendation, I think that communication is a key. And I think that if we have a council member that would be willing to be the, the primary contact. And we have an individual from the organization, and maybe with a secondary, who's the primary contact. And we create that communication on a weekly basis, even if nothing's happened, that we establish that, that the organization knows that, again, we see you and that we know that you're, just as council member Dominguez has stated, that, you know, we're going to continue to work through those processes. And we create that, that communication between individuals. So you know that we're not, not thinking of you and that you know that they're doing the diligence to follow up the staff, to know where we're at. So, you know, maybe there may be a week that we don't have anything to communicate, but the fact is, is that we're still communicating and you're not forgotten.
Y está recomendando si hay alguien del grupo, uno de ustedes que quieren ser la persona que hagan derecho, tiene comunicación directa con uno de ellos. Para que cada semana ellos nos informan dónde va el proceso. Y también, bueno, eso es que dijo ella, y también podemos ver cómo podemos ayudar a ellos con el proceso.
And the last thing that I think the city wants to do is we don't want to give you some sort of a date that we know that we can't keep.
No, quiere darnos una fecha y no podemos cumplir.
Work we have to do to be able to, you know, make that decision. So I don't want to give them a false sense that, hey, in two weeks before we're going to have an answer, in three weeks or a month. You know, I, I honestly don't know. But I think once we get some pieces, we'll, we can start to get a better idea of maybe when we can get this put together. But right, but right now, it's just, I don't want to promise something that I can't deliver.
Ella quiere darnos una fecha y que la cumplieran más o menos.
Si yo tenía otra pregunta, que si ese dinero que está destinado, los miles de dólares, que si está destinado para los trabajadores excesiales y excluidos, exactamente para eso, es mi pregunta.
The question was, is this money, this money dedicated or might it be to this guy to exclude the central workers?
Nothing has been dedicated at this point. We've received half the money, the other half will come sometime this year. It gets dedicated when council, or when it gets to your finance committee and they make recommendations, the council actually votes, then the council dedicates.
Ellos tienen la mitad del dinero y van a decidir la otra mitad después. Nada de ese dinero han tomado votaciones como van a usar. En el momento que toman la votación ya es estar, que deciden que sí, es dinero a este grupo o a estas personas.
It's a decision for the five people that have been elected to serve as your city council.
And I also, I also want to add to the complications of government money and how exposed it is of who we give our money to. And so that, that is a, that's why we need to speak with legal counsel to make sure we're protecting our citizens of this community and protecting their identity. And if we cannot do that, what, what else can we do?
It doesn't have to be published in the paper, and no names have to be.
Great. I almost said it all, but. But in another, in another scenario, if someone were to come to Lee and for your request, emails, the list of names, that is all public information. So we need to make sure that we have everything in a row so we, so we protect our citizens. And that's what I meant by safety when I was saying that earlier.
Ella dice, thank you for the survey.
Yeah.
Ella dice que ellos quieren estar seguro, por ejemplo, si dan ese dinero a estas personas, alguien del público no puede venir a pedir a ellos en la lista de las personas. Por eso dijo quiero estar seguro, que hay seguridad.
Como que él dice mantener seguridad.
Sí. Plus anytime we write a check, anytime funds get distributed, it, it, there is a record of it. And so that's what we approve when we go through vendor managers' claims list. And on that is a listing of where the, you know, who's, who we're paying to the order of and the amount that it is. So it is a listing.
Cada vez que da un cheque a las personas, saldría en el report público los nombres.
And an avenue that I would like to look more into is kind of how New York did it through a fund. So as if we were allowed legally to pay an organization that would process, you know, that might add a level of protection for the folks that are receiving that. And so that's the things that we need to speak with our lawyers about to see, is this a possibility? Like, how are we going to protect our citizens? And that's what's taking a little bit.
How do we proceed on Lisa's suggestion of a person from the group and a person from the council? That's good to work back and forth, you know, so they don't wait for the next council meeting.
I'm, I'm happy to, to be the communicator. I also would like to open, I know, you know, everybody's doing a lot of work on it. So but just, is there anybody who wants to be the point of communication on council? Or would you prefer we wait, we could, we could ask Councilman Zacharias and Councilmember Veronica via email and have a decision, you know, by the end of the week or? I think if you have one of you that are willing to step up and take on that role now, it's nothing that has to be voted on. It's just something that, you know, again.
Just keeps sliding.
It keeps, if the council's okay with that, I'd like to do that, if that's okay. Yep. And we do have, we do have translations. So if you would reach out to me with whom we want to have, keep the direct line of communication open with and for correspondence. And then we do have the ability to do the translation if they want to receive correspondence in English and Espanol. And we can work out those details. And then, then I can let you know. And, and again, maybe they have a preference as to who, you know, maybe the organization has a preference. I'm not trying to say, I mean, I, I think the mayor is good. But again, we want to make sure that we're having someone that's communicating that the organization's also comfortable and, and, you know.
Yo solamente quiero decirles, este, gracias también a ustedes porque siempre nos han tratado bien.
I also want to say thank you to you all because you've always treated us well.
Sí, pero en verdad sí necesitamos una respuesta. Yo sé que tiene mucho trabajo.
But that's true, because we do need, and we know you have a lot of work.
Yo sé eso, lo entiendo, trabajo es trabajo, pero la familia lo necesita.
Work is work, I can understand that, but the family is family. Thank you. Thank you. So we think they will get the emails going.
Yeah. Oh, actually, we have, one of our emails.
Perfect, perfect. And then, and if they decide that I'm okay with it. And then they'll maintain a public record.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. What else, don't chase? I there, we can ask if there's any, I think our public here is leaving, but is there any public comments? I did put it out on the chat to have them raise their hand. Or they could write something in comments for public comments and I've not received any. So we'll move to city council public comments or correspondence. Anybody have anything to share? I did receive a message from a business owner who was a little frustrated because their dumpsters for their business hadn't been dumped on time. And they weren't able to get into city hall either via phone, they left a message and hadn't received one back. And just wanted more clarification on why it's closed eleven thirty to twelve, is it? Or?
Eleven to twelve.
Eleven to twelve. Okay. And, and they did express that they understand their staffing issues, but was wondering if it was ever considered to have a staggered lunch hour. We've, we have tried to stagger the lunch hours. But again, eleven to twelve allows, you know, us to be able to communicate when we're not going to be able to transact business with the customers and keep it consistent. Prior to that, when we tried to stagger, then it was difficult because nobody could get out, you know, of the office at their assigned times. Because again, we're, we're all serving the, you know, customers. And so that's why we went, and we're still working through some things. I know by calling in, it goes into a voicemail and that's part of the processing time. When they come back over a lunch hour is going through the, the voicemails. And I have a staff meeting tomorrow with the staff. And we'll, we'll be going over to make sure that we're, we're getting the voicemails answered on a timely basis, getting return calls. Also, some of it is, is we may receive the message in and then we've got to generate a service request. So we've got to check with, you know, the, you know, what the request is, we have to be able to follow up. Because that way, when we make a follow-up phone call to the individual, we've got the answers for them. So we just ask, you know, remember, we, we've got to have time to process your request too. So, but we'll talk about it. I think I know the business that you're speaking of, but I can talk to you often, maybe just to clarify.
Sure. I'm always happy to staff, I mean, if a message comes in from me, they're always really good to get to me. And I try to call them that day to let them know that I received it. And, you know, if, if I give them an answer, I will otherwise. And I usually try to get an answer before I call them, if not, I let them know.
And I know some folks will send messages to my personal Facebook and I am not ignoring you, but it is my personal messenger. So I may not see it until I'm home from work. So, so we'll, you know, again, it's educating the community that we've had some changes. And then it's also educating the staff to make sure that we're doing, that we're being diligent and following up in a timely manner. So, thank you. All right, city manager or city quick public comments or correspondence? All right, so we'll move on to old business, resolution two zero two two zero three zero one dash one zero, a resolution for PE number two for Columbarium project. In the, sorry, in the amount of twenty thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and twenty four cents paid to Salem Stones Inc. To motion to create second. So this is the second portion of the Columbarium project. So, and council member Veronica has been our go-to on this and she did reach out to the company. And they're going to, they're going to pull this, the Columbarium ditch in inventory. And then we'll schedule to make plans for the delivery and the placement. And just to clarify, I had to look up what Columbarium was. And so it, I don't know if everybody that might watch this later might understand, but basically it's a place for, that people can respectfully store, like cremated loved ones, right?
You actually purchase what's called a niche. And each niche usually hold two cremains. Then you're, you know, you can have a little plaque and stuff installed. Then you're, you know, you can have a little plaque and stuff installed in your niche. So it's just a, just another way for people to, uh, there are folks out there that don't want to be buried in the ground, like you can cremate this. And instead of buying, you know, there, there are people that do buy like a full plot and will bury in their graveside. I think a lot of your younger folks are starting to find, and I mean, that's, that's even my plan. My wife and I have talked that we want to be cremated and we'll, we'll call it very, so we've got a final reference.
Thank you.
Can I just add that this information is on the website? Um, and also if they are wanting to talk about it, they do need to schedule it. That's why it's on the website. They need to schedule the time to talk to the staff appropriately.
Yeah, I don't think there's any concern. I was just clarifying.
Just so people may not know where to call.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we've been working through, again, some processes and just as Jacob had stated, he worked, you know, we worked to get that information on the website. And, um, we, when it, when it comes to dealing with cemetery spaces and columbarium niches, then we would like the community to understand that we, you know, again, we take that serious and we want to have, um, scheduled time so we can dedicate that time to the individuals because we do respect that. Either if they're pre-planning or they've lost someone, we, you know, this, this isn't a fun thing that you want to have to, you know, organize. So we want to make sure we can dedicate staff to go through things thoroughly.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so we need a, uh, motion to, if you get your motion.
Oh, we got the motion in second already.
All right. My council. Yes. Yes. Passes three zero, resolution two zero two two zero three zero one dash one zero. Move on to new business, um, set the date for city council work session, March eighth, the, for final budget discussion at five P M. A motion, do I have a motion? Yep, I motion. If it work, I don't, we'll discuss.
Well, I, I guess I said the final budget discussion, meaning we wasn't going to have any more. But I guess it's not fair to say final because we may need to have one more after that. So.
A budget discussion.
That was your clerk wishful thinking there.
Does that date and time work for?
Yeah, I think that works. And we will be back at the relator or something. So five. I have the, I need a second.
Okay, and then, uh, consent vote here?
Yeah.
All, 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 there. Hi. Any votes? Okay, three zero, we'll meet at five P M at Willie on March eighth. Other next is me to set the date for the city council work session, um, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Um, presentation from Bi-State Parks and Recreation Strategic Park Plan.
And I talked to, and, um, I think six thirty will be um, appropriate for them to have enough time to go through the strategic planning for the park. And this will be presented by Bi-State, that's our pod, basically the.
Who was hired to actually put the master plan in. They'll, they'll give an update on what's happened and have the information.
So that'll just be before the next council meeting.
Six thirty. If you all agree.
We have a motion for, no, motion. Second, so, all in, all in favor? Hi, any votes? Okay, three zero, that's from about March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, six thirty. Um, so we'll set the date for special meeting on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget public hearing at six P M. Motion.
Second. And just, um, I'm setting it out for a special meeting to approve the budget. Um, because it's taken us a little bit of time to work through the budget information and there's absolutely nothing wrong. Um, we've, we've probably done this in the past couple of years just because we have a lot of information to go over. And, um, we want to make sure that we're giving, you know, mayor and council everything that you need to know. And if there's some changes, because once it goes to the public hearing, uh, posted as a public hearing, um, changing it means we have to start the process all over again. So, um, that's why we're recommending the date for a special meeting.
I have a motion to.
Yeah, motion.
Motion. Oh, I already did, okay. Um, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Three zero, uh, we will have that, uh, special meeting, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, six P M here at the public library. Item D, the city council discussion and appropriate action, library board seeking approval to award library upgrade project contract. As we saw in our notes earlier, later, or, you know, in our packet, that, that contract is, that it is available to look at.
So you have a memo from an Ali's here on Zoom, so if you have some questions with her. Um, of course, I suppose I better let you get a motion in a second so we can look to discussion.
My motion. Second, okay, so we can discuss. Does anybody have any questions? Ally, anything you need to add? The last of the Maryland I R E funds.
And Ally had communicated earlier when we were working through our budget amendment, um, this will be the remaining uh, bequest funds that was received from the Maryland I R E estate. Um, prior to this, uh, the H VAC system was upgraded at the library and the children's room. Um, and so this would be the final upgrade portion from those, uh, bequest dollars.
And you probably noticed that they're all higher than what they had estimated. Part of that, there were some of the reasonings, but the fact that you've got three bids, I mean, you get one a little bit lower, but they're fairly competitive to one another, especially two or three. Um, and I think part of that may have been that's more, or they feel a little more comfortable. Um, but, but I also know that they came out and did a lot of due diligence before they put their bid together, so.
You're confident, even though it's a lot lower.
Yeah.
S and G is the one who has asked the most questions and they did come to the pre-bid meeting, none of the other, other contractors did.
Okay, and they were very diligent with the phase one. Um, a lot of the additional costs is something that was out of their control because they're in needing to be renovated. So, um, but they did pretty close to, and the communication was always good if they ran into a supply issue, so.
There's no other discussion, um, we put this to a boil, all in favor? All right, any opposed? Okay, three zero for the, for the library upgrade project, um, contract.
Ally, will you let your board know that council recognized their recommendation and is approved as well?
Absolutely, thank you. I have E, um, city council discussion and appropriate follow-up from the West Liberty Chamber of Commerce request to approve twenty twenty-two community events with city support, also, um, included in our packet. I don't know if it needs to be motion, but motion to, uh, approve the twenty twenty-two chamber events as stated with the necessary resources that they asked for. Any discussion?
So I, as I included in the memo, um, I mean, we're working with the newer chamber director. Um, we have found in the past that, um, putting before council what the, the annual events and they already know that they're going to have planned and, and organizing those things ahead of time, um, is helpful. And then if there's something that would come up, you know, prior to the event in addition, then there's that understanding that that would have to come back to council if they're requesting more from staff members outside of what we've already, um, what we've already committed to that we can support. Or any new events that may pop up, yes, yeah. Would those come before a separate?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. I was thinking and put something in there in the memo that they would come back with.
Any other discussion?
And primarily, and just to add, because, um, they typically do an umbrella insurance policy for their events and those events or the events are listed. So that's again, why they would come back because they would need to update their, their insurance.
Yep. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Three zero, um, we will approve the twenty twenty-two community events, city support. So we'll move on to, um, item ten reports by, uh, the city engineer.
Good evening, Leo Foley, Beanster and Kim. Um, first one is a well number two, uh, I think the last council we talked about being, uh, on Northways list. Um, we did send notes to Northway today or, and, and earlier this week. We haven't heard back from them at the exact schedule, but, um, I have told them that we really need to be on their list. So soon as I get a date, I will tell you, but I think the weather broke a little earlier than they suspected. And hopefully it continues to break. Um, number two is Rainbow and Maxson. Um, we've moved into the final design stage, we're working to get the plans done and we want to finalize some things with the city. So we've got a meeting Monday with the city manager and whatever staff he needs there to kind of go over the plans and set a schedule before we come back to you. Number three is, uh, West Liberty Foods co-digestion study, I've been reporting on that. They have, um, a grant application into the energy department, but have not heard anything in the last couple of weeks. Sometimes they'll stall out for a while as they go through them. All I have today, if anybody has any questions.
And, yeah.
Thank you.
Leo, and the city staff members?
I don't understand, you know, if you've got any questions, one thing that if you haven't seen it on our website, it's something that Jacob's been working hard and chief on, is we now have, um, the emergency text alerts for West Liberty. So, you know, it's called Alert Iowa, it's through the Rave system. I've worked with Rave, I've worked with NEXO, they're both great programs, but, um, I've, I've already signed up. You can take just the generic signup where, where, where you'll just get the alerts. Like in my case, I've done the more in-depth signup where I've given them like my medical history and my wife. So if they are alerted, they come and they know, so you can tell your friends, to tell your family. I mean, it's, it's free, it doesn't cost anything, it's a great tool. Sometimes when, you know, in the middle of the night, there's a storm that's coming and you get that text, it may be a little annoying, but it's always nice to have that. Because not everybody has like a weather radio that they keep at their bedside either. So, um, it's, it's a great program and I want to thank Jacob and Chief for, you know, working with Chris Chas, we get.
So we're working with USCOM and I, I, I pull a little bit out, but we'll be pushing it a lot more in the month to come. I think one of my goals is to have information throughout the bills in English and Spanish and other ways. So I think it's a, it's a great. Because messaging is the best way to get people's attention. So, yeah.
And is this an app we can download or?
It is, it can be an app, it can be just a text and it can be other things. It just depends on the level of which you sign up for it.
And the app is snort nine one one.
Okay.
And I actually had it in Missouri and when I signed up here, so when you've got an account here and you want to close that one and open this one, and I just said, yes.
Already signed it up. Yeah.
So.
Quick question, do you, sorry. Quick question, do you know if, um, so if you sign up for the alert, um, when we do the test sirens, do you know if they give you an alert that it's just a test? Because I would think that alone for our community would be helpful.
I guess we'll find out.
Yeah, because I think.
Questions to ask, Chris.
Yeah. We, we do get a lot, you know, when they start running tests and we try to remind folks, you know, um, about the test times. But I think if there's a way to notify that it's just a test, that, um, that might help a lot of, you know.
And that is, and that may be something that we can do in-house and if we have to schedule.
Yeah.
When the department is going to test those sirens, if, if the department. Okay. In previous, it's been, the, nearly five departments have taken care of that communities. I think we just keep with Chris. And if, yeah, if he will put it out, if they'll at least let us know, then we can put it out on ours, our register. Yes, so they're aware.
The way the system is set up, the county's running it. So when the county does their things, they can set, so you can set your things up so you can be a West Liberty resident, get West Liberty stuff or you can get county stuff or both. I see, it's, it's really, it's customizable and the information that city manager talked about, it gives us a heads up. So when ambulance is responding, fires responding, police responding, that information can pop up in the hall. So when we get on scene, we kind of know what we're going into. So if it is a medical, you know, if there are some issues that we should pay attention to start with. So it's super beneficial and it's confidential. It's not like this gets blasted everywhere, so it's a good system.
Headed in Stanwood, it does alert you hours before the test, actually. It'll tell you that there's a test coming up and that way you'll know what's going on. Also, I set up, uh, spider training at the West Liberty Fire Department on March thirty-first.
Other spotters? Spider training?
Spotted.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I mean, if you want spidey powers, then I guess you can come down, but.
Maybe they have to go together.
Right, but, uh, Sky Warren and National Weather Service, spotter training is what it is. Um, set up for March thirty-first at the West Liberty Fire Department at five thirty. Um, it's set for all the local fire departments in the county, police department, if they want to. City officials, employees, staff, all that, if they want to come as well. But they'll also teach you a little bit about that same system as well and how it works.
Not to run outside and look for it.
As a spy, as soon as you hear the sirens, that's our first thing to do is go look.
Maybe they can't teach that.
Uh, March thirty-first at five thirty, um, has to be there at least fifteen minutes, half our early, just to make sure you have a seat. Because it sounded like we're probably going to pull our trucks out in order to make room for everybody.
Bring your own chair.
Or bring your own chair.
If you want to reach out to Jacob and then, um, we would be happy to help. Whatever you need from us from our communication.
Yeah, I'll email you. Make sure I forward all that information to you as well. But that's where that is, isn't it? Which you spoke of in that program, it is a, it's an excellent program, it keeps you updated on everything that's going on. Even if it's, like you said, if it's not in your city and you got county, you know, wide information, you will know at least forty-five minutes before things happen, so.
But, but part of ours, hers is customizing is if we have a road shut down for a water leak. That is, you know, J, J, Jacob can get set up and send that to you. And I guess anybody that signed up knows it's a shutdown or, I mean, we, it's our own service. It, it's, it's anything that's kind of a mercy and, and we, and we've talked with Chris that there's, you know, there's some things that we can do, there's some other things that we may have to. If we want to do some other things, we may have to actually pay a little bit more to do that. But, but the free part really gets us a big majority of what.
Thanks, everybody, for the work on that. That's super cool.
The Amber Alerts will scare the heck out of you. I'm just.
Okay, that next level, if I don't have Facebook, you know, I mean, it's kind of like, I mean, it was very diligent to make sure. It's like for individuals in our community that, you know, if you don't have Facebook, so here's that next level of an answer is we can offer, this is another form of communication.
And, and I think by, by, well, those that don't have a cell phone, if you just have a, a home phone, you're like automatically signed up, it's, you'll receive a call. So, if, you know, if you don't want to, I think Chris said that you could call and opt out.
You can opt out.
Anybody that has a home phone and no cell, they're automatically going to be put into the mix. Just so they get those warnings that they can choose to opt out if they want to.
And that's another benefit of going in and doing the signup is you can tell it, I want a phone call, I want a text message, I want an email, I want a voicemail. It'll, they'll do whatever you tell it, you want it to do. And that way you don't have to go seek out information, it will, it will come to you.
Love it.
Suffer from domestic violence at all, too, you can set a password up where if you call nine one, if you gave them that password, it lets them know there's some sort of domestic issue going on, instead of telling them on the phone.
Yeah, is that part of what we have?
It's an option.
No, that, I don't, I don't know, I can't say for sure.
It's an option to set up for when you sign up for it.
As you sign up yourself, it's, it's.
Right.
Because they have a whole, there's a number of things. Because I got to do it on the phone and it takes a bit to set everything up if you want.
Yes.
And, and you can set up as much or as little as you want, or you don't have to set up anything and just say, just send me a text.
Because if that's the case, I think it'd be worth looking into some sort of communication campaign about that particular feature too.
It, it explains it on the website how it works as well.
I, I, but just like specifically pointing that out for folks and saying, you know, here's a resource and working with some people who work in domestic violence in our community and maybe.
And we, we've thrown around the idea of having times where people can come in and say, help me get this set up. Like, I want to set it up, but I, I don't know how, right? Don't have a cell phone, whatever, so we toss around that to maybe. Because I've, I've had a lot of experience with Rave, Jacob's done majority of the heavy lifting on this, getting it, uh, get with the county. So we all know some about it. So if that's something we want to discuss and set that up, we can probably get that going.
Yeah, you can train me, I would help with that too. I think that's super important, so.
I mean, it has a whole rundown, how, because I was looking at it yesterday and I spent, how long, maybe a good half hour on it, just looking through the different stuff. I mean, you can add your animals, you can add everything to it, so that way us firefighters get a call, the search fire, we know who's in that house, how many animals are in that house, what else is in that house that, you know, we know about all of it.
That's awesome. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, motion, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor? All right, any opposed? Look at this.